A bunch of allegiance, followed by the Star Spangled Banner sung by Mr. Harold Hull, followed by a moment of silence.
............................................................... Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, the broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night; o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming; and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there; oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We may now have a moment of silence. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hull, for joining us this evening. Outstanding as usual. Clear, Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich, here. Spitali.
Yep.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Terri Myrick from the School City of Hammond for the, not presentation, but you will be drawing names for the Hammond City Council Scholarship.
Thank you so much, President Vanez, and it's that time of the year again where we get to draw those fifteen scholarship names, and it's from all of the high schools here in Hammond, so we have it all organized and ready to go. The first school that we're going to do is Bishop Knoll, and I don't know if anybody here wants to help us draw, or, we're starting with Knoll. We're going to draw a winner and two alternates, so you're going to have to draw three names for us, and you each got your little cheat sheet in front of you, and, oops, let me see here. Ashley Kubaki, K-U-B-A-C-K-I, is the winner. Two alternates.
She says Kubaki's mom and her kid.
You can pull them both at the same time if you want, however you want to do it. Christian Williams is the first alternate. And Anissa Villagomez is the second alternate. Thank you. And next, we will be drawing the scholarship winner from Hast. Oh, sorry. No, that's Esther Good. I didn't introduce her. The winner at Hast is Gerardo Munoz, and we're going to draw two alternates, and if you noticed, I brought a helper this year with me. It's Esther Good, who is our Executive Director for Secondary Education for the School City See, you always have to train somebody, so when you're ready to retire, you've got somebody to step in, right? The first alternate is Gabriela Diaz. And the second alternate is Tanya Cuevas. Then we will do Clark High School, and we'll be drawing three winners and two alternates. One? Yep. Long ways to go. Okay, the first winner is Daisy Diaz. The second winner is Mercedes Salmeron. Third one? And don't leave, we need a couple alternates. It looks like Ellie Guido. Okay, two alternates from Clark. And the second alternate is Araceli Terrado. Next, we'll do Gavitt High School, so we'll draw two winners and-
I'll yield to you since you graduated from the first class there.
Pardon me?
I'm yielding to my elder. How many we doing for Gavitt?
Two winners and two alternates. And a second winner. Choose two alternates. The first alternate is Breona Keys. And the second alternate is Kaylee Garcia. And I'm going to do a little commercial break while I'm putting the Gavitt names away. If you hadn't read in the paper or didn't know about it, Gavitt was named one of two schools in the state of Indiana as a Title I Distinguished School for Closing the Achievement Gap, and this Friday, they are going to be having a parade and an assembly at the school, and we're going to be having somebody from the Indiana Department of Education coming up to recognize them for their accomplishment, so we're really proud of Gavitt and what they-
What time is that on Friday?
Um, two o'clock in the afternoon.
Lot of geniuses came from Gavitt.
Lot of gladiators in there.
Okay, Hammond High School. Hammond High School. We're doing three winners and two alternates from Hammond High School. And the third winner is Brittany Kamisky. Elizabeth Alvarado is the first alternate, Elizabeth Alvarado. And the second alternate? Ricardo Andrade. Ricardo Andrade is the second alternate. And then, last but not least, Morton High School. And we're picking five winners and three alternates, and as you can see, we have a lot of applicants from Morton, so. First winner is Destiny Doby, D-O-B-Y. Second winner is Leela Hicks, H-I-C-K-S. Third winner is Jeremy Starkey. Fourth winner is Joseph Colvin, Joseph Colvin. And number five is Mariah Higgins, Mariah Higgins. We need to do three alternates. First alternate is Eon Hayden Harvey. It's I-E-O-N, and then Hayden Harvey. A second alternate? Emily Pavella Cardiel. Emily Pavella Cardiel. And then the last alternate? Is Carlos Madden. And that does it for the drawing, thank you, and then we'll see you on the 22nd, and we'll have the administrators and the students with us so that you can recognize them at your next Common Council meeting, so.
Thank you, thank you very much, and congratulations again to Gavitt.
No problem, thank you.
Councilwoman Vanez?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I would like to move for a suspension of the rules to move Resolution 17R-21 to consider it.
Okay, motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Kalwinski, to suspend the rules to pass Resolution 17R-21. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Motion passes.
Resolution 17R-21 sponsored by Councilman Warple and Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution recognizing and honoring the Bishop Knoll Warriors Hockey Team, Indiana State High School Hockey Association, Class 1A State Champions.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
If it pleases, the council, can we have the resolution read aloud by the-
Whereas youth sports have always been an integral part of lives of Hammond citizens and those who live in the northwest Indiana region with the region producing many gifted and talented athletes, and whereas the Common Council finds that the Warriors represent a true region Cinderella story, rising from an upstart JV team to winning the state championship in three short years, and whereas the Bishop Knoll Warriors Hockey Team finished its season with a record of eighteen wins, thirteen losses, and four ties, and won its second state title, beating Culver Military Academy three to one on March 11th, 2017, at the South Bend Icebox, capturing the Class 1A Indiana State High School Hockey Association Championship, and whereas the Common Council of the City of Hammond wishes to recognizing the outstanding gift, dedication, and teamwork shown by the team, Coach Richard Sobolow, as well as the Bishop Knoll staff, faculty, and trainers, and now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond that the Common Council, on behalf of its citizens of the City of Hammond, extends to the Bishop Knoll Warriors, congratulations and praise for representing the region as a 1A State Champions for 2017.
Right, is, did I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Kalwinski. Gentlemen, if you would, one moment, please, so we can take care of some business here, and then it will really be official. Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Warple, for final passage of 17R-21. Any discussion?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman.
This is just the whereas part of it. We'll pass the resolution and get it signed by the mayor and properly, and we'll get a plaque for you and bring it over to the school, but they were in the mayor's office, what was the mayor, last Wednesday? Yeah, very nice group of kids, very successful program, do you want to say anything? And, no, it's, but Coach Sabila, thanks for, nice to meet you, and this is just the formal part of it.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
From housekeeping business, I didn't, motion to pass the resolution, but to suspend the rules, I seconded it, so we have to do the-
Did we, did we not do that properly? Did I not do that properly, Clerk Golick? We suspended the rules and voted on that, yes, yeah.
Also, I wanted to mention that Coach Sabila's not here today, but Kevinson is another one of the coaches that's here with some of the fellows who were on the ice that Saturday at the Icebox. By the way, the coldest and best ice in Indiana, and I found out it's the coldest because the man who runs it keeps the temperature lower than any other facility, so everybody's cold. But it's great ice, the guys came out Saturday morning, Mount Carmel came out with a quick, quick goal, and you were working from behind, and he came back, he stormed back the second and third period, you looked really good, really quick, and it was a great game to watch. The whole, the whole day was really special, all the different levels were really fun to watch. You guys did remarkably well, considering it's been a short tenure. Rich Sabila goes back with the team many years, he coached when my son was playing on the team, who's much older now, and they had a hiatus for a while, and came back strong again with the committed coaching staff, and Rich, who's always been interested in hockey, who also played for Notre Dame when it was club hockey there, so they're learning from some really good coaches, and they picked it up really well, and so congratulations to all of you, and to the parents for, it's a big commitment on their part to get you around and do that sort of thing as well. Thanks, Bill.
Absolutely.
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, who was that? Councilman Markovich?
I like to put the council as a whole as sponsor, too.
When we're done voting, we can do that.
Voting for-
Pardon me?
Suspension of the rules or the resolution?
For the resolution, because if, if all of us are on it before, it's a foregone conclusion, which it's going to be anyway, but, so we will do that after. I just had this conversation with Attorney Berger, so yes, after the resolution passes. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 17R-21 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Councilman Markovich?
Madam Chairwoman, make a motion the council as a whole be also listed as a sponsor.
Thank you very much, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, gentlemen, one more time.
Thank you, Council.
Oh, no, I just want to say thank you, I mean, we have a great young group of guys here, so, two of our departing seniors, unfortunately, and our returning captain, who actually scored the game-winning goal, so, wanted to, you know, offer my congratulations again to them, and, you know, unfortunately, I won't see these two back next year, but I wish them all the well, and hopefully continue success, and hopefully we'll be back next year, right?
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you very much. Boy, do we have some terrific kids in Hammond, that is very, very nice. Okay, getting down to business. Reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Madam President, I make a motion, we go back to regular order of business.
Thank you very much, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now for reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from April 24th, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to approve the minutes from April 24th. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Move for register, approval of claims for April 19th through May 3rd, 2017, for Council Meeting, May 8th, 2017. Beginning of claims dated 4/25/17, and ending of claims dated 5/3/17, claim number 2656 through claim number 2893, for a total of $4,108,994.25, I so move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from April 19th through May 3rd of 2017. Any discussion?
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Councilman.
Have one addition. Claim number 2893, Kraus &amp; Sons Remodeling and Rehab, $1,383. Invoice, March 27th, 2017, for a home of Larry Keller, 430 Mulberry Street. I so move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Rakels, to amend the claims, number 2893, in the amount of $1,383 for Kraus &amp; Sons. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Amendment passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now for claims as amended. Clerk Golick?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Clerk Golick. Now for public hearings, there are none. Moving on to communications. Communications? Any communications? Councilman Higgs? Nope, you got them all done last meeting, okay. Any communications? Communications is now closed. Okay, committee reports.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Building and zoning will be bringing out 1710 tonight?
Thank you. And community and crime watch, as I do at every meeting, I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch groups that will meet on Tuesday, May 16th. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at 6:30 PM at the Ophelia Screen Center. Friday, May 12th, Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at Golden Manor Senior Apartments, that will be at 1:00 PM. Fri- Thursday, May 18th, Hessville Crime Watch will meet at 7:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Wednesday, May 17th, Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet at 6:00 PM at Lafayette School. South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 18th, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building, that will be at 7:00 PM. The Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, May 11th, at Calumet College, that will be at 6:30 PM. And Columbia Crime Watch will meet Wednesday, May 10th, 6:00 PM at Columbia School. For those who are looking to contribute to the safety of your neighborhood and the quality of life in your neighborhood, I urge all of you to attend one of the community and crime watch meetings. You get a lot of great information, and not only safety information, but things that are going on in the city. Also, the Hammond Community Watch, in, also with Mayor McDermott, Hammond Community Development, and the Hammond Urban Enterprise Association, is again sponsoring the City of Hammond Security Light Program. Qualified applicants will receive a free dusk-to-dawn security light. You must own and reside in your Hammond home, provide proof of homeownership, provide a valid driver's license, or state ID. Applications must be received in person between June fifth and June ninth only. That is at City Hall on the first floor, room one fifteen. Quantities are limited, so it is on a first-come, first-served basis. So, and as I always close the meetings of Edison Community Watch, it's because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee report is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final reading.
Ordinance seventeen dash ten, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, an ordinance which establishes a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps, to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with a comprehensive land use plan, as amended, for property commonly known as eighteen thirty-seven Calumet Avenue.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for final passage of seventeen dash ten.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli, for final passage of seventeen ten. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen ten passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vines, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final action.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Item A, Resolution seventeen dash, ordinance seventeen dash eleven, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. And an ordinance amending ordinance numbers seventy-six eighty-five, eighty-two-hundred, eighty-five sixty-four, eighty-six thirty, eighty-six forty-five, eighty-seven eighteen, eighty-seven fifty-four, eighty-seven fifty-five, eighty-eight fifty-four, eighty-nine thirty, ninety seventeen, ninety-sixty-one, ninety-one ninety-four, ninety-two fifty-two, and ninety-three fifty-nine, also known as section thirty-six point zero zero five B one of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to approved uses for public safety.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
Move through first and second reading, refer to police and fire. It's a committee meeting set for five o'clock on May twenty-second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Kalwinski, for first and second reading of seventeen eleven, referring to police and fire, with a committee meeting on May twenty-second at five PM. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Seventeen eleven passes on first and second reading, nine zero.
Item B, ordinance seventeen dash twelve, sponsored by Councilman Rakels and Councilman Emerson. An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-four thirty-one, known as section ninety-one point zero three six of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to bees.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Rakos.
Move for first and second reading on seventeen dash twelve, with a committee meeting at five fifteen on the twenty-second, and a public hearing as well on that date.
Second.
Council as a whole.
Motion by Councilman Rakos, second by Councilman Emerson, for first and second reading of seventeen twelve, with, referring to council as a whole, on May twenty-second at five fifteen, with a public hearing. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Well, it's good that a subject like this is regulated, because like Councilman Warple stated, there are a lot of people that have bees as a hobby, not only for the manufacture of honey, which is expensive these days, but for other reasons, but on, on this ordinance, I think it's a little bit vague, because it doesn't state like, if there's gonna be certain distance from a fence or a property line. I know I wouldn't be, I wouldn't like to have a bee hive next door to me unless it's a certain distance away. And bees are known not to sting unless they're provoked, but some people are allergic to them, some people are easily frightened by them. Usually in the fall, they, they come out more, and we can see them on, on their picnic tables, and trying to get the serp, bee pop, and all of that juices, and also, they follow people with cologne and perfume. And they can also be provoked by, let's say a kid hits once of these hives with a throwing ball, or an object, or any kind of vibration, so while it's, it's, it's not a bad ordinance, but I think that, in the public hearing or, or committee hearing that we have, we ought to get some experts, entomologists, on, on the subject, and explain to us a little bit more of the behavior of bees. There are a lot of species of bees, and some of them, like the honeybee, I know there's some of them that resemble the African bee, which is very aggressive, and can be deadly. So I think we need more discussion on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Let the bee out.
I beg your pardon?
Madam President?
It was good.
Yes, Mayor.
This, this whole issue came up from Mayor's Night Out. I know you were there.
Yes.
There was a gentleman in the audience that asked that we reconsider this. That's how it was generated. It's not, I'm not lobbying for it, I'm not pushing against it, but I do know people currently have, what are they called, apiaries, or I forgot what the term is.
Apiaries.
Apiaries. Are currently, have apiaries in the City of Hammond. Some very well-known people in our city. I didn't even realize it was against city ordinance. And when I was informed, I said, that's funny, because I know a few people off the top of my head that have these types of facilities. I was in Highland, a gentleman that lives on Ridge Road, that my wife knows, this gentleman has a bee hive, and I'm afraid of bees. He took me right up to it, and I was standing two inches from it, and the bees didn't bother you at all. And I'm, you know, if they were, if the ball hit or something like that, I wouldn't want to be around it, but they were very tame. I mean, if you guys shoot it down, if you guys pass it, I'm just following up on a constituent's recommendation, and I appreciate the sponsors of the ordinance that picked, that picked this up, and they were there also, and they heard the gentleman that was talking about it. So that's where this all came from. And I was really hoping we'd get a bird ordinance, and we'd have birds and bees in the same session, but we couldn't, we couldn't come up with it, so.
I think we've got enough of that going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Alrighty.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I be having a lot of experience in this stuff.
Okay.
When you talk about the apiaries, it's, the ones I've seen are not bee hives. They're, they're boxes, and like I explained in, in caucus, it's kind of funny that this is in front of us, but I can guarantee you, there's two or three hundred people in the City of Hammond that do this as a hobby. It's not something that we need to get them to get a business permit to do, because it took a year and a half for the guy to make enough honey to give me for a Christmas present one year, so. This is basically a retired person's hobby, and I make the recommendation that we move this in the committee. The only question I would have as to what Councilman Torres says, I don't know who you would call as a bee expert. I literally, they've literally escaped from the boxes in my truck in the past, and they never bothered me. And I'm sweet.
Not a clone.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Well, there are bee experts, entomologists, they, I know the pesticide people get their license from Purdue, so they be, I'm sure they have some experts on them.
Well, Mike, I guess my question, Madam Chairwoman, is who do we contact? I mean, who is he suggesting we contact to be at this committee hearing?
Well.
Councilman Torres.
We can try to, to get an entomologist here. We can try people from the animal control. They have had calls on, on bees before. It's, I, I think, I'm, I'm not opposed to the ordinance, because I think it should be regulated, and there are, there are some people that are more careless than others. They know, the experts know how to maintain an apiary, but there are some people that just don't care. So I, I think it should be controlled, and whether it's subject to inspections, make sure that their boxes are correct, and, and it's done appropriately, because there are people that are, like our mayor, it's frightening of them, and little kids included, and big, big kids, too. So.
I have an apiary in my garage right now. It's an unintended apiary. They just sort of moved in, so.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, Councilman Rakos.
I will make some contacts. I'll try to contact Purdue, Northwest, and I know a couple of people that actually do this, and one that requested that I sponsor this over a year ago when I finally did. And I'll make sure they're at the council meeting.
Madam President?
Yes.
Councilman, Marissa, Judge, Judge McDermott knows a gentleman that lives on Ridge Road. He's very knowledgeable on this, so we can help you with that, probably. Okay?
Okay.
Does Munster have an ordinance then?
Councilman Markovich?
Sure.
Would you like the floor?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
I think number six on the second page of the ordinance covers somewhat what Councilman Torres was mentioning. All colonies must be registered with the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Division of Entomology, and Plant Pathology annually, and the beekeepers shall complete the Indiana State Beekeepers Association classes.
There you go.
Alrighty, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for seventeen twelve to be referred to council as a whole on May twenty-second at five fifteen with a public hearing. Just whoever, Councilman Rakos, do you think fifteen minutes is going to be enough on this, given that we had the discussion that we did this evening?
We also have a public hearing, which would encourage people to come out and think about it.
Okay, okay. Alrighty, motion passes. Moving on to...
President Vines, the introduction of ordinances have concluded.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution seventeen R dash twenty, sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution of the Hammond Council to support the renovation and repair of Hammond City Hall.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of Resolution seventeen R twenty. I so move.
Second.
Who was the second? Okay, motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli, for final passage of seventeen R twenty. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
As a reminder to everybody what's going on, this is in regards to the City Hall issue, whether we're gonna attempt to move downtown and renovate an old building in downtown Hammond. Attempt to move down, another option was attempt to move downtown and build a new building downtown. Option three was stay put at fifty-nine twenty-five Calumet Avenue, renovate this building. Option four, which was do nothing, which is the option we've been following for a long time. Councilman Higgs is bringing out the resolution that said we want to stay put at fifty-nine twenty-five Calumet Avenue and renovate this building and make it livable for, I forgot the term of years in there, Councilman, I think it was forty or fifty years.
Eighty?
Eighty. No, no, no. Make the building...
Eighty years.
Eighty years. Thank you, Councilman Markovich. But that's the resolution that Councilman Higgs is bringing out. If passed by the Hammond Council, I would act accordingly as your mayor, and we would begin studies on the current building, about consolidating department heads and departments into this building, making it busier, coming up with some type of plan, so that, you know, the police garage to the north, and District Mall to the south would be incorporated, hopefully, into that vision. Maybe even going all the way down to MLK pool, sort of a grand vision for this area, and make City Hall at fifty-nine twenty-five Calumet Avenue useful for the next eighty years. I could tell you that this administration's done a ton of thinking on this subject, and while I respect my friends from downtown Hammond, they want us to move downtown, down there, I think it's the right idea to move down to downtown Hammond, but I could never come to grips with, what am I gonna do with fifty-nine twenty-five Calumet Avenue if we move to downtown Hammond? I don't think it's right for us to leave fifty-nine twenty-five Calumet Avenue with no plan in place. I didn't think it was fair to the neighborhood. Quite frankly, I like this building, I like working here, I love my office, I think council feels the same way. It was just, if we were gonna move to downtown, the decision was made a long time ago to move City Hall to fifty-nine twenty-five Calumet Avenue. It probably should have been built downtown at that point in time. It wasn't. Here we are. Now, I just could never come to grips with, if we did move to downtown Hammond, what we're gonna do with this neighborhood. And it's a beautiful neighborhood, it's a strong neighborhood, and I don't want to make it weaker. I could never come to grips with that. And going back probably six or seven years, I just don't know what we would do with this piece of land if we moved. And as long as there's no plan in place to, to redevelop this building, I can't leave an empty building. I couldn't. It's basically what we're talking about with the county, with the county threatening to shut down the county courthouse, you know, it's the same thing. If we would have left this neighborhood and left an empty building standing, it wasn't the right thing to do. So I decided to talk to Councilman Higgs. We approached Councilman Higgs and asked him if he'd bring this resolution out. I appreciate him doing so. And if it passes the council, I'll act accordingly, and of course, I'll keep you in the loop as to the status. And there'll be many other issues coming to the council if we are gonna build in place that you'll have to approve along the way.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
The question, the funding source for any of the ideas regarding City Hall, what is going to be the funding source for?
Well, we'd have to get a price first, and downtown, we had a funding source in place, which was the district downtown. We don't have that option where we are currently. So we would have to talk about that down the road. Once we found out what the price tag is, and what it would look like, and if it was approved by you all, then we'd have to approach you again with the funding mechanism, and there's still a long ways to go. But the biggest issue that we've been grappling with was where are we gonna be? And we floated multiple ideas to the Hammond Council at that time, and it's been pending, and I appreciate the Councilman for bringing this resolution forward. But quite frankly, Councilman, at this point, we don't even know how much it would cost to stay put. I imagine one of the lesser, one of the cheaper options is to stay put. We're already here. So, but once we identify how much it's gonna cost, then we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for it, Councilman. And then you're still gonna have issues to come before you, do you want to pay for it. Because we still have the option to do nothing. We have that option. I don't really think it's a wise option, but we do have that option. So this just tells me which direction you guys are comfortable with. This is our house. You work here just like I do. So you guys are giving me direction, and I appreciate it, because this is a tough issue, and this is an issue that's gonna affect Hammond for eighty years. So let's make the right eighty years, so let's make the right decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Tomorrow, I'll get on it ASAP, I mean, tomorrow figuratively, we'll get on it ASAP. We've been doing a lot of research downtown, I mean, the new building, you know, the renovating of the old building, I mean, I'm sure some study's been looked at here, and, but we have to get on it, and then we have to talk about who's here. Like, I think fire department should be here, I'll be honest with you, I think police leadership should be in this building, I realize they have another building, but there should be a presence of every department in this building, we just don't have room for it right now. Planning and development is scattered all about the building, they should have one place where, you know, where their boss could supervise their employees. Right now, they're on the basement, the first, second, and third floors, it's not the right way to run a department. We do have space opening up in 2019, we all, once the court closes, we are gonna have a huge additional space, that's something, when we first talked about this issue, we didn't have that, you know, we've, you know, obviously voted to eliminate the Hammond City Court, and 2020, that space is gonna be totally vacant, and there's options there, maybe we open up the planning and development wing over there, I don't know. But we have to look at all these issues, Councilman, and we do have more space opening up in City Hall now because of the move, so. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Madam President. In downtown Hammond, still needs help. And I'm sure there's people that are supporters of downtown Hammond that are probably feel like we let them down, or me personally, I let them down, I understand that. But I remember there was one gentleman, I don't remember who he was, Councilman Higgs you may know, he came in here and he gave a really good speech about how much he loves having City Hall down the street from his house. That wouldn't hit me. You know, I listen, I don't always agree with what's said about me in here, or what's said about the city, but I listen, and that guy hit me. He was like, "Mayor, what are you gonna do with this building if you leave?" He talked to me after. And I didn't wanna say, "I have no idea," 'cause it doesn't sound very merril if you tell them, "I have no idea what we're gonna do with this building if we move." It's not the right answer. We have no plan if we move from this building, that's not right. Nobody would wanna see an empty former city hall in their neighborhood, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Call for a vote.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed, seventeen R twenty passes.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
On the agenda, under A, the notice of intent is not needed, it just had to appear on the agenda, but since the ordinance passed...
Thank you very much. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I did receive a correspondence from Gary Gleason's department, it says regarding the guy rail on Wildwood and State Line that you are requesting to have removed, we are referring it back to you to send to the engineering department to the, due to the high beams being installed in concrete. Thank you, Gary Gleason. So that's basically right off State Line where you enter into Calumet City, there's a guy rail that's not even being utilized, and the neighbors are complaining that it should just be removed, so that's something the engineering department and as well as Gary can work out in terms of removing that guy rail. Maybe if a car was to have an accident there that was set there for protection, I don't know, but if right now it's not being utilized, and actually lived on the corner of that property, just complaining that it should be removed, so that was my purpose for sending the matter.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I would like a letter sent to the Public Works and the Park Department in regards to the vacant lots in the second and third district where the trees have been sitting for quite some time, if they can, as well as code enforcement, if they can go ahead and inspect those properties and put a lien on them and have those trees removed, I so move.
Do I have a second?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We cannot remove trees from private property, ma'am.
I beg your pardon?
Councilman, the councilman suggesting we remove trees from private property, we can't do that.
Madam President.
We had a situation with a Hammond councilperson that removed trees from private property. I'm sure everybody remembers what we're talking about.
Madam President.
That's right. Yes, Councilman.
Mayor, what I'm saying is that these particular trees are sitting on property, we have an ordinance in place. If those trees are removed, they can put a lien on that property, otherwise, we just have a bunch of eyesores throughout the entire city. Something needs to be done in that regards, that's what I'm saying.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I sympathize with the councilman, I agree, it's frustrating when this situation happens, and we're very aggressive about obtaining properties as quickly as possible. If we own properties that these trees are on, Councilman Higgs will knock them down because we own them, but if they're privately owned, which in many cases they are, and the tree's a nuisance, we could cite them, we could bring them through code, but we can't top their tree down. We'll go, we can go to jail, I would be a bad prisoner, so.
Mayor, I'm not, I'm not saying violate the law, what I'm saying is that they need to be inspected, these properties, no one has given me, let me finish, no one's given me a list of those properties, I can identify them and then request that they be looked at. For some reason or another, I do not have a list of those properties, whether they be privately owned or city-owned, but they are trees that are sitting. One is just adjacent to the post office, just horrible, every time you ride by there, I'm sure the police officers see it, the residents in the community sees it, just sitting there and been sitting there for at least two years. It's an eyesore to the whole entire city, so I'm requesting that someone inspect those properties, and if they are city-owned, remove the trees or whatever is necessary.
Madam President.
Do you have a list of those properties?
I do, not in front of me, but I do have a list.
If you could include that, that would be helpful, 'cause second and third districts, they're both very large districts, and so, I mean, if you have a list of specific properties, Councilman Higgs, maybe there's a way we could look at them, if we own them, obviously we can knock them down, but if they're privately owned, we'll respond. I have no problem with this, but a list would be greatly appreciated.
I'll compile the list and submit it to the mayor's office, as well as to those departments.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Torres, to have a letter sent to Public Works, the Park Department, and Code Enforcement with regard to vacant lots and the trees and on the properties. And Councilman, you will get that list to Clerk Golick?
I will.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President, just for clarity, a lot of those properties, because they are on vacant lots, I can only identify them by the street and location, so that's what they'll be compiled to, and I'll submit them to Debbie, and she can forward them to the property departments.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion that the council send a letter to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, the Office of Air Quality, Hannah Bays, for two reasons. One is to request for a public hearing on Whiting Meadows LLC and their proposed air permit, permit number M zero eight nine dash three eight one six eight dash zero zero two six two. The second reason is to also let them know that the Hammond Council, Common Council offers its council chambers for a public hearing, provided a time and date can be agreed upon. Reason for this is there is a significant local public interest in this air permit, and a public hearing would afford local residents the opportunity to voice their opinion and concerns prior to issuance. Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Kelwinski, second by Councilman Emerson, for the Hammond City Council to send a letter to IDEM regarding Whiting Meadows and an air permit, is that correct?
That's correct. It's on the, Madam President, it's on the former Federated Meadows site, known to a lot of Robertsdale North Hammond and Whiting residents.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to send a letter to IDEM regarding Whiting Meadows air permit. Any other new and unfinished business?
Just, I guess there were a couple.
Councilman Higgs?
Yes. I'm just trying to make it clear that my aunt will be funeralized on Friday, the funeral will be at Malzine Baptist Church on Kenwood at eleven o'clock, so.
Sorry for your loss. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
This is Saturday, May thirteenth, ten o'clock till noon, Kenwood Elementary School, Nick D. South Shoreline, open house for Hammond residents, business, and organizations for the Westlake Corridor Railroad Project. There's still talk about the train, whether it's coming or not, so the meeting is this Saturday, ten to twelve, a.m. at Kenwood Elementary School, sixty-four sixteen Holman Avenue.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. George Stoya. Okay. He decided to talk tonight.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. What was I gonna say? I just wanted to thank our illustrious mayor and the equally illustrious council here for voting to stay here and renovate City Hall, that's just my own personal thing, I'm not speaking for anybody, but I think that's great news, and I think it really anchors, like the mayor was saying, this area, and I've heard some of the people speak about it too. I think one reason it wasn't built downtown, if you look at some of those old pictures of downtown Hammond back in the day, there wasn't room down there, that thing was packed to the gills, everything was tight, and so there wasn't any room to, I don't think, build, build a City Hall down there. So anyway, secondly, with respect to the bees ordinance, I haven't read the proposed ordinance, but I would ask, some query could be made as to whether homeowner's insurance covers any mishaps or that would happen because of the bees. That might be something that should be looked into. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Public expression is now closed. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second. Second by Councilman Spitali, to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening.